Welcome, everyone, to the January 12th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home. And we have one counselor, Counselor Pat Farr on the phone, and two that are in other places and not able to be here today, Counselor Paul and Counselor Pryor. So with that, we're gonna...
Is Betty here?
Teddy.
Betty's not here.
When was she traveling?
I don't know.
We have a quorum with five now that Pat's on the phone.
Okay.
Till one of us gets up and leaves.
Whoa, whoa. We have a quorum to listen.
Yeah. I could do any action there.
All right. I want, that's strange. All right, Envision Eugene Work Session Update. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel. This is part of our ongoing Envision Eugene discussion that we've talked about, that we'll have several of these over the next couple of months. And just to kind of lay a little bit of framework of what we're trying to do, one of the things we've talked about is looking at Envision Eugene through a triple bottom line framework. And so last council meeting we had, we started then, and started talking a little bit about the economic side of that. Today, we want to talk about some of the social equity pieces of that. And then the third piece of that that we'll be talking about is the environmental side of that. Just remember on Envision Eugene, the sort of catalyst for the discussion was a conversation about the urban growth boundary. And there were some legal requirements for us to do some assessment and eventually put a Eugene-only UGB on the map. But what we've collectively decided, that it's really a much broader conversation, and the purpose isn't just to have a conversation about the UGB, but we're really wanting to talk about where do we want the community to be over the next 20 or 30 or 40 or 50 years? And how do we, one, start visualizing that, thinking about that, and how do we start moving towards that? So really, when we think about Envision Eugene, it's not just about an urban growth boundary. That will be a sort of an outgrowth of this conversation. But there is a broader conversation that we need to be aware of, part of which is a social equity conversation. So we'll spend a little bit of time talking about that today. I also want to kind of start off with what we're starting to call the Seven Pillars of Envision Eugene. And let me make a little bit of context around that.
Two, three.
A little context around that. And thank you for actually pointing that out. Julie is one of our CRG members, as the rest of us also are, but the rest of us are city staff. But thank you for joining us, Julie. And part of that, again, is to continually sort of make it an inclusive process. There's several things that are guiding the work of Envision Eugene. The city council has, over time, reconfirmed their vision, goals, and outcomes, and we've spent some time on those in the last couple of years. So that provides a broad context for this. We've also spent some time within the CRG and outside the CRG, Community Resource Group, talking about what are the best outcomes we want to try to achieve. And there's quite a bit of narrative around that. We also have talked about Envision Eugene principles, which are another piece of that. And what we're trying to do with the pillars really is to try to, it's not to replace those, but to try to boil it down into a user-friendly ways so that when people think about what is it we're trying to generally accomplish with Envision Eugene, it's a good snapshot of that. And so we talk about, we want to support a sustainable family wage economy. People can kind of grab onto that if we're trying to plan for climate and energy uncertainty or protect and restore natural resources or any of those. It provides a good snapshot of what we're trying to do. It also helps, I think, with a framework as we come back to the council with strategies and tactics for accomplishing these kinds of things. It actually starts to create an easier framework within which to work. We'll be spending some time at tomorrow's CRG meeting, actually having the CRG talk through these and provide some input into that. But just to give a little bit of context, as we get to the question and answer period or comment period in today's work session, if you have some particular thoughts about any of this, let us know that. But we'll be spending time with the CRG, and eventually, these will be coming back to you. Could be modified a little bit based on some of those other conversations. So with that, I will turn it over to Cal, who will get us started on the social equity conversation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Our presentation today will walk through three main areas. We'll start by looking at social equity framing, community issues and trends, as well as social equity's connection with Envision Eugene specifically. First off, framing the conversation through the lens of social equity. You've had presentations previously on this term, and basically, a social equity lens is asking us to consider how might a proposal or action affect the ability to meet basic human needs? How could it influence cultural expression, community relationships, effective government, safety and personal security needs, as well as neighborhood and stakeholder commitment? Are there potential inequities for specific groups of people, and how are we addressing those? As well as, have all voices been heard? So the definition that we're working with is social equity and social well-being is about equal opportunities for everyone. Resources are made available to the whole community, and it's a safe and healthy place where human rights are upheld and people can earn a wage in which to live upon. It's also important to note that from a TBL perspective or triple bottom line, we look at the three parts, but we also need to be aware of the intersection of those parts and the ways in which they work together and overlap. It's hard to separate them in really distinct ways, and so some of what we are sharing today, you will have seen in the economic presentation, as well as you'll see pieces of it in the environmental. So it's really important for us to remember that these are all interwoven and connected. So social equity and Envision Eugene. Not all of the issues that we face as a community can be addressed through the Envision Eugene process, but some can. And so we continue to build a foundation to address our community core concerns. The nexus of social equity and Envision Eugene becomes clear in these four areas, basically making Eugene a livable place for everyone. And then it's about access, so access to employment opportunities, to access housing opportunities, services, transportation, and education. So we're going to start to begin to look at some community issues and trends, and some things that we might expect to see in the future. So by looking at the past, present, and future, it helps us understand the community that we're currently serving, as well as the community that we perhaps will be serving in the future. So first, we're going to look at some demographics. So this helps us understand who's here, who encompasses our current population, and how is it changing? This slide represents the age demographic of our population, and so it's a comparison between 2000 and 2007. The top bar is 2000, and the bottom bar is 2007. And as you can see, we see significant movement in the age categories over the age of 45. We know that Eugene's population has gotten older over the last decade, and this is a trend we expect to continue over the next 20 years. So next, we're going to look at some ethnic and demographics and the makeup of our population. And so it compares again to recent past. And so the bar at the top represents 2000, and the bar at the bottom is 2007. We've seen significant growth in our Latino, Hispanic populations, as well as Asian populations. This trend is also expected to continue, particularly with the Latino population. We can expect that our population will become both older and more diverse in the future. As we plan for housing and job needs and livability, it is important to remember these trends. And so we'll start to look at other trends around employment and financial considerations within our community. So you were provided probably a lot more information during the economic presentation, but access to employment and a living wage are important things to consider within this social equity context. Do people have the buying power to get their basic needs met? Most of the information that we're seeing is saying that this is becoming increasingly more challenging. This slide highlights where we are in terms of unemployment and local wages. Our unemployment rates are over the national rate, as well as wage levels issues are more persistent. So local wages that had generally been on par with the average state wages 35 years ago have lost ground ever since. Currently, the average local wage is 16% below the average for the state. Employment and earnings are closely connected to other poverty and financial considerations. So poverty and financial hardships are on the rise. With 20% of Eugene households living in poverty, the incidence of poverty in the Eugene-Springfield area has doubled over the past 40 years. Other indicators of financial hardship is the fact that many of our children in schools qualify for free and reduced lunches. And when we consider our community members who are without shelter, we understand the connection between financial hardships and housing. Last year in January, we did a one-night housing count in Lane County, and we identified over, almost close to 4,000 folks who were homeless on that night. So the issue of housing affordability, you know, there is a significant and disturbing gap in our community between the increase of housing costs and the increase in incomes. While the family income has increased by 6% over the past 30 years, the cost of renting has gone up by about 26%, and the cost of purchasing a home has gone up 144%. Further evidence of this problem is the fact that a significant portion of Eugene's renters and homeowners find themselves cost burdened. Cost burden refers to the amount of income a family needs to apply towards housing, and if it's more than 30% of their income, the family is considered cost burdened. In 2000, half of all renters faced a housing cost burden, along with a quarter of all homeowners. Members of our community with low and very, or very low incomes have a housing cost burden unless they are receiving some type of subsidy or assistance. So one recent example, in December, Shelter Care, which manages renter assistance program, they saw over 500 requests for assistance with rent in the last month, so, which is a really significant peak. The map on this slide depicts a view of housing foreclosures. So another trend we are definitely aware of is the circles represent properties with recorded foreclosure notices, which between February of '09 and December of 2010, we had over 1,200. And it's something that we expect to continue in the future. So you can kind of see where those foreclosures are happening on that map. In these economic times, more people who did not need assistance previously are now finding themselves really seeking resources and support.
Phil Slattery is one of our Community Resource Group members, and we've asked him to join us today also.
Hi, Bill.
Sorry I'm late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue's here, too.
So we want to start to look at the nexus of housing and transportation. So not only is housing affordability an issue, but the increasing transportation costs are adding to the problem. The further away people live from their place of work, school, and important services, the higher the transportation costs. So this map identifies how people's income compares to their housing and transportation costs and the geographic patterns that result. The green areas have a least cost burden with respect to housing and transportation costs, while those in the pink areas have a higher cost burden.
Let me point out the pink, please.
So it's brown, sorry. Red. Thank you. I don't have a, oh, thank you, Terry. Great. With some exceptions, the map generally shows a pattern of greater combined housing and transportation costs at the further edges of our city, while those least cost burden are closer to the downtown core. So now we want to share some information from the community assessment that United Way did, which collected data over, they've collected data over many years, and they help us understand the struggles of our community in really important ways. The survey that comes out about every other year, and the most recent survey paints a picture that tells us more people are facing a greater difficulty meeting basic needs. And there is a clear link to access concerns. So when you're, according to the assessment, difficulty affording or accessing services is higher in almost every category than previous years. These include health care, support services, government functions. In addition, funding challenges in the school system have put further pressure on school consolidation, and with fewer, larger schools, transportation distances increase on average. Access to other types of goods and services can also present a transportation challenge. For example, the location of a full-service grocery store offering a variety of nutritious food choices is market-driven, which means lower-income areas may be less served. In 2010, the Eugene-Springfield Consolidated Plan identifies housing, homeless, and community development needs. It also calls out specific needs related to public infrastructure. So for example, improved pedestrian access overall and considerations for persons with disabilities are needed throughout Eugene. Areas occupied by majority low and moderate income persons are also in need of additional parks and recreation facilities. As Eugene's population increases, these types of needs will become more important when planning for future development and redevelopment. In accordance with council's goal of a community where all people are safe, valued, and welcomed, we look at the considerations of community safety. This has been a priority issue for community members, and it ranks in the highest areas of concern in recent surveys, including Eugene Counts and the Eugene Neighborhood Survey. We know that community safety is not limited to personal safety, but includes many of the previous issues discussed, such as economic security, safe transportation options, as well as safety from discrimination and harassment. So at this point, I will turn it over to Terry, who will build on these trends and issues and highlight the nexus between social equity and the Envision Eugene process.
Thanks, Raquel. I'm going to walk you through what we've been doing in Envision Eugene that relates to social equity and the topics that Raquel has been introducing to you. First of all, we have been holding listening sessions. These started in early 2010, and we held them with stakeholders and groups from around the community, including those listed on the slide. A session with low-income residents at a St. Vincent de Paul development, one with Housing Policy Board members and Human Rights Commissioners, together with affordable housing providers. And we held a meeting with the Human Rights Commission Accessibility Committee, and then as many neighborhood groups as wanted to participate as well. Some of the things we heard at these listening sessions can be categorized into some common themes. They relate to social equity and livability. We heard emphasis on the need for equal access to services for all residents, including the importance of creating living wage jobs. Issues were brought up around fair housing and the need for universal design considerations for new housing, especially given our community's increasing population with disabilities. Community members in every listening session mentioned the need to continually improve access to transit service. So that was something we heard again and again. And in neighborhoods, there was highlighting of the need to embrace our character and unique characteristics of different parts of the city, and to promote new development that builds on what is working well within our existing neighborhoods. As you know, the Community Resource Group has been spending a lot of time considering what the best and worst possible outcomes are for our community with regards to different aspects of growth. And in November, the group addressed the worst and best possible outcomes of planning for new housing. Here's one of the statements, but all of them are included in your packet. "New families do not come here because there's no affordable housing nearby and jobs aren't available. Young families are unable to afford to live in Eugene and move elsewhere. Eugene becomes stagnant and does not attract new vibrant opportunities and industry." Luckily, we moved on to the best outcomes, and here are a couple of things that were said. "Everybody has a safe, comfortable place to live and the means to maintain it. They are connected by public transit to worthwhile jobs. They are close to transit, goods, services, healthcare, and healthy food options. And we provide a high quality of life for residents. Quality of life for all income levels improves. Incentives are provided to implement strategies and density is increased while quality of life is maintained. We have sustained transportation, housing, and employment opportunities." So just a few minutes ago, Raquel mentioned these four areas of intersection or connection between social equity topics and issues and Envision Eugene, and I'm going to spend a little time on each of those now. Improving access to jobs that pay a living wage is a best outcome for Envision Eugene. And again, as mentioned, you heard more about this issue during your December work session on economic development, but the issue is closely related to social equity as well. To move toward that outcome, Envision Eugene will need to address the three strategies shown here on the slide: growing local opportunities, a creative economy, and targeted industries, which are drawn from the Joint Elected Officials Regional Prosperity Economic Development Plan. Implementing each of these strategies has land use impacts. We have to provide for adequate and well-configured sites for our businesses to reach our economic goals and thereby improve access to employment opportunities for community members. To ensure a variety of housing options for all people in the community, we need to have a sufficient land supply for both multifamily and single-family housing, and a range of types of housing that we may not currently have. This means we need to plan for the types of housing that will likely be needed by our future demographics. And as mentioned previously, access to housing is critically dependent on an efficient transportation system. In addition, as new housing is developed and existing buildings might undergo redevelopment, we need to be mindful of potential displacement issues and gentrification concerns. One of the best ways to improve residents' access to daily service needs like food, transportation, schools, and parks is to plan for 20-minute neighborhoods. This concept is a priority recommendation of the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan, and it involves increasing the number of Eugene residents who can get their daily needs met within a 20-minute walk or bike ride from their home. Planning for transit-efficient development extends that list of nearby services to jobs, and all modes of transportation need to be planned for and improved, not only through Envision Eugene, but through our connection to our Transportation System Plan update, bicycle and pedestrian strategic planning effort, and our long-range transit planning, So making Eugene livable for everyone. An equally important issue is to ensure that our neighborhoods hold on to the livability and sense of place as we continue to grow and change as a community. These qualities differ from neighborhood to neighborhood, and fortunately, as you all know, a lot of community work has been done recently to identify neighborhood characteristics that are cherished by each neighborhood's residents. And as Envision Eugene moves forward, we need to incorporate the work of infill compatibility standards and opportunity citing, task team recommendations, and as supported by the dozens of neighborhood leaders who sign the letter that's included in your packet. There's a critical link to be drawn between this foundational work on livability and the best outcomes for Envision Eugene. And making Eugene livable for everyone, including people who live here already and people that will be coming here in the future, is the ultimate goal. That's the overview we have for you, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have, and also invite some comments from our Community Resource Group members, Bill and Julie. And Stephanie Jennings, our Grants Manager from Community Development, is also available.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you all are willing to start out by sharing your thoughts, we'd appreciate hearing from you first.
You're up. Okay. Well, I'm just a simple builder. This is way beyond my capacity to help solve the social problems, but we have a, as a builder, I build both commercial and residential buildings and have built ADA accessible units and that kind of thing. So I have a passing familiarity. I'm not an expert in any of them, but I've also been on the Board of Directors for Easter Seals when that was around, and we used a program called KIP, Community Integration Program. We took kids out of the confinement areas and into places where you have homes modified. That's about as close as I've come to dealing with social issues in housing. And I will tell you that I, since I joined, I became a builder in 1975. Prior to that, I worked for IBM, so it's a giant quantum leap sideways. But the processes, I started begging for land use expansion back in 1980, and it was pretty frustrating. And I could go on and on, but I will tell you that this is a great opportunity to hear much more than I ever thought was involved in expanding the urban growth boundary, because my simple perspective was, you need a house, I need some land to put it on. And that's essentially how I approached this. I have to tell you that I am in over my head with regard to all the social issues and all of the other things that have to be done to address expanding the urban growth boundary. Personally, I think that, from the perspective of a builder and a representative, I'm past president of the Home Builders Association, you do need land to put houses on. There are so many overlays in this issue that the February deadline is going to have to be, we're going to have to crank it to get there. But as a planning issue, I think it would be a mistake not to identify, if you don't identify the specific parcels, that's fine, but if you don't identify a direction and where you can go, when the time comes to, if suddenly we have, say, Boeing moves to Eugene, you're going to have an expansion of jobs, an expansion that you probably unanticipated, and you really need to think about where you're going to go. And building is best done with a little bit more long-term planning than I think you would suspect builders actually think about. But my concern is that we ought to identify where we're going, and then figure out how to overlay all this other stuff. Lots and lots of issues that I said I'm totally unqualified to address, but I do know supply and demand, and I do know corporate structure, and I do know it takes a long time to get decisions made. And as I said, I've been beating my head against the wall since 1980 to try to get some more land. So my perspective is one of great hope, because I think this process has opened the doors and has allowed people like me to have a voice in an environment where we're not allowed to speak typically, and we are, and I am, a representative of the black hats, the bad guys. So it's nice to have a chance to say to you, we're not really your enemy. We're trying to build those things and put things together for you, and we'd like to do it in conjunction with you. But sometimes, the battle, the lines that are drawn, maybe not even things that you had anticipated, come from above, and now we're fighting with larger issues, and I don't think we were well-educated about all the things that you have to face. So I have no appreciation for what you're doing. I can't imagine being a city council, I have no clue how that would work. But I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this, at least in my company. So that's about it, I think. And I thank John and this planning stuff. They've been great to work with. I mean, I'm still building, and so I'm at risk. You know, I know there are some retribution issues we can deal with, but no, I'm kidding. Lading staff is great. I like working with them. I'm not afraid of you anymore, now that I've got some friends. But thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
I just want to just add to that how much we appreciate it. This isn't something you just get to come in and do for an hour. It's been a big deal, and to have those voices at the table and people listening to each other the way they are and learning things that they, other parts of the picture that they didn't know, and being able to add that to their own thinking is a really important thing, and appreciate it a lot. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, I would start off just by seconding that. It has been a much bigger process than I anticipated. It's been cumbersome and frustrating at times, but always rewarding, and I still feel very hopeful about the outcome. So I am honored to be here, very inadequately representing the group, but nonetheless, representing the group at the moment. I guess my reaction to the presentation will be twofold. One, I'll specifically respond to the... to the...I can't remember the term exactly, the burdened...cost burden households. We see at the Y about 100 potential members a month who are asking for financial assistance to get involved, get their family involved in healthy recreational activities, and we have...part of our conversation is asked about extenuating circumstances, like what are the...what is happening in your world that is requiring this added support? And it's amazing to me how often we hear, "As mortgage and rent has been extenuating circumstances," and that just seems not right, that...I mean, we're...the question is meant to get at medical bills and huge legal bills and such, and we're hearing actually a very basic need is seen by many as an extenuating circumstance, and that's a not uncommon, actually a very common response. So that puts a very personal face on this very statistical kind of cold term. About 100 people a month say that to us, so that's something to sort of keep in mind. My next comment, I think, will be just more general in nature about the process itself. Whenever you engage in conversations this large with this many people, conversation can be circular, and various things kind of continue to rise to the top and percolate as recurring themes, and there have been many of those, but two, that resonate with me and continue to kind of be the thing that I just want to figure out how to always keep on the table. Our one, the only thing we know is that we're going to have no idea what our community is going to look like in 20 years, so how do we make a plan today that takes that very true statement into account? And we have no idea what the next 20-minute neighborhood trend is, or if that really is a sustainable way, or if there's a next best thing of what is another model for building homes that incorporates sustainability and better lifestyle for folks. So flexibility is the related theme that percolates to the top then. Like, how do we envision a builder being able to walk in and say, "I have kind of a hot trend tip on how to make this community a better place to live, and how do we make that affordable and worth their time and energy and effort?" It's one thing I have learned, if nothing else, in this process, is how many people in this community really want to invest their time and their energy and their money in making this community a better place to live, but are burdened on all those fronts, on the time, energy, financial, to the point where you have to have pretty strong perseverance to make it through, and that's not a blame-placing thing. It's not...it's nothing but is just a statement. And Bill spoke to it, he's been working since 1980, and he's feeling hopeful about it now, but that's unfortunate, that it's come to a place where people are...who really, really just want to make this place wonderful, and all of these ideas and concepts. I can't imagine anyone looking at this list and saying, "No, you know, we don't really want to feel to be near healthy foods," or "We don't think that it's..." Nobody would disagree with these concepts. It's the devil's in the details. So I don't envy your work, because you are going to be the place where you hash out the details, but I do ask that somewhere in there, we keep in mind this concept of flexibility and being able to respond quickly and efficiently to the needs of the people who really do want to make our community a better place to live, so.
I would just add to that, that the examples that we've had around our table recently in the front-page downtown projects, they have not been easy for those who are putting them in place, or those of us who have been trying to put them in place. They have taken a lot of steadfast determination on the part of the people who want to do the development, and a lot of working every angle to try to make it...to bring them to a reality. So that's a very real illustration to us of how hard it is to do, even if you know what you want to do, and even if you have all the reasons why it's the right thing to do, it doesn't make it any easier. And in this economy, it's been a very difficult thing to do, so I think we're...I think that's a really kind of good illustration of some of the things that you were just pointing to, and only a couple of them.
I'll say that this process, I think, opens up...I mean, I feel very hopeful about that, because any time you go through a process that's so other and different, your outcomes are going to be other and different. And so I feel hopeful about that. I don't feel like we're in a hamster wheel with that. I think that we're bound to break out of that. We're going to have to start thinking creatively and how to get around those other issues.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mike, I want to start with you.
Sure. That sounds great. First of all, thank you to staff for the great presentation. Appreciate that very much, and thank you to our community group members very much for all the time that you've been putting in this process. A lot of people don't know that it's been, you know, multiple, multiple full days of effort, and it's really greatly appreciated. I have to say that this part of the discussion of the triple bottom line gives me the most difficulty, for the sake of clarity, understanding what it means, understanding how to make decisions based on the smartest, the wisest kinds of choices. I think everybody agrees that we want to do the equitable thing every single time we can. It's just recognizing it and helping us with the tools to figure out where those decision points are. There are some terms that give me some...I don't know what the right word is. Angst isn't the right word, but I don't understand very well. One of them that we use quite a bit in this is access. Now, I get the sense that access means different things depending on what you're talking about. So for example, access to employment opportunities isn't the same thing as access to transit. I seem to...one of the concepts that kind of flows through all this for me is that access often means affordability. Do I have that right? Can you give me some help here when I read, or when I hear you say "access"? Is it often the case that what you mean is affordability?
I think that's a piece of it, so I'm going to let other people also share their, but I'll take a stab.
I mean, I guess through different circumstances, does access to health care mean affordable? Making health care affordable?
It means that you can get to health care, so physically you can get to where you need to, to get that health care. It's available to you, both economically and just...there aren't barriers that say, "I'm not going to serve you," for whatever reason. So there are lots of ways in which there can be barriers to access. It's not just about affordability. It can be, "I physically can't get health care," or "Once I go, I'm treated in a manner that there's a barrier that then I'm not getting the same level of service that someone else is," that could then put me in jeopardy. As well as, "Is it affordable? Can I afford to get what I need?" So that's me, but I would say...
I'll let Stephanie talk maybe a little bit about access to housing, but I think Raquel touched on it. There's so many different ways that we get access to things, and one of them actually increasingly are through sort of web-based programming or access to services and things like that. So even having...making basic opportunities available to people who otherwise can't get them. So there's a whole bunch of...there are a whole bunch of definitions of accessibility.
I would say, for me, part of the...by providing access to, rather than saying "we're providing affordable housing, employment, health care," it's kind of drawing a line between where the role of city government is versus the role of the private sector and the role of the individual in seeking employment. And so part of this...part of the conversation in the last session was, "How do we create the environment for creating more jobs in our community that people can then in turn access?" And so as it relates to affordable housing, you know, I think we can look at what is currently available in the community, and we know that many people are having difficulty finding that affordable housing, and they might go to some other place to try to get what they need, or they might double up with another family, or they might live in a place that is substandard in order to meet that basic need.
Does that help?
Yeah, it does. There were a couple of pieces here, and I had about a minute and a half, I think, left on there.
The timer kept running when you...
Yeah. Another piece is, one of the things, Raquel, that you said that really stuck out for me, where you were talking about access to full-service grocery and healthy foods and that sort of thing. You used the words that lower-income folks in our community may be less served. Did you mean to say "may" or "are"? Which is it?
I said "may."
Okay. So if we're going to make decisions about specific land use decisions, do we have information that can give us a better sense of where populations are underserved rather than where they may be?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Throughout a lot of this, I heard a reoccurring theme about transportation, and one of the things said at the end was that all modes need to be planned for and improved, and you were talking about bike, ped, and transit. And it seemed to me that I was hearing you say that was more accessibility was what was needed there, and that was a theme throughout what a lot of the groups were saying, more access to affordable public transportation. So at a time where we're planning for transportation in the way of the LTD's work, that is less accessible because you're more centralized and less into neighborhoods and where it's accessible to people, how are we...isn't that one of the goals that we should have, is to have a transit system that's more integrated into neighborhoods and less centralized, if access is a goal?
Well, I think that what you're talking about is having an accessible network, and so it's both...it's bike, it's pedestrian, it's transit, and talking about how you serve...I mean, if you go into the Bethel area, you find lots and lots of kids walking to school. They're getting less parental pickup and drop-off, but they actually don't have as good of a pedestrian network, excuse me, as some of the neighborhoods in town where perhaps are not as well utilized by that demographic. In terms of the centralization, you're talking about standards within a transit industry, so for a higher level of transit service, like an MX, like a light rail, it's considered good accessibility to have that within sort of a half-mile-to-mile, depending on the level of service.
What do you mean by higher standards? I'm sorry.
So if you have a...if you have a bus that stops frequently and takes an hour and a half to get downtown, sometime...the location, the stop frequency, the access to neighborhood within a quarter mile is a typical standard, because it's not considered a very high level of service, even though, as you may be saying, goes...may have greater coverage within a neighborhood. As you start providing actually faster routing, so by having a fixed route, whether it's MX or a light rail system or a subway, people walk a mile to get to subways in Boston and New York and Chicago and Atlanta because it's a high level of service. That's considered very good access to transit.
Well, that's kind of the definition problem, I guess, I'm having, is what does access mean? Does it mean the same thing to everybody, and if so, how do you know? You know, does access mean it's easily for you to get?
What does it round, Mike?
Yeah, I probably should.
Andrew.
Thank you. So it's interesting, because access, for me, would be interchanged with collaboration, because in my mind, access is making sure that there are programs...we don't necessarily have to be the owner of the program, but that there are pathways that are clear and open that...for communities to take whatever, you know, take whatever subject matter you want, health care or grocery stores. You know, as long as we know that there's ability for that person to get to, you know, like on the bus from point A to point B, is that, you know, that isn't probably streamlined access. I wouldn't think it is, because I'm used to getting it in my car and driving, but if there was access to a bus that would take a person there, which a lot of people do, you know, to me, that's part of what access means. The other comment I wanted to say was to our friend Bill here. You know, when you're talking about building houses, and I'm just sitting here thinking, I think you're understating your...what you've given this community, because in my mind's eye, when I think about social equity, I can't believe that you would ever build a house for any certain demographic, outside of seniors. I mean, because seniors have been kind of capsulated in their little senior, you know, centers, which I'm looking at one. It'd be kind of cool to live there. But, you know, so I...you know, I hear you...I heard you speak, and I thought, "Boy, you know, that's not really true," because, you know, when you build a house, you build it with a family in mind, not necessarily any specific color or race or religion. You just want to build good houses for people to live in.
Well, you know, there's...housing markets are divided into two parts, really, respect construction, which is basically where you buy a piece of property and you put a house on, and you don't know who's going to buy it.
Yeah.
And then the other is custom.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, the word "custom" is overused, but custom is where somebody comes to you and says, or you come to me and say, "I have you...I have this need. I have three children, a grandmother that's staying with me, and a disabled..." So, "Put a house together for me." So I either go to an architect, or you bring me an architect, and that's the second...that's the other phase. So yeah, there's a little...but no, there's nothing...it has nothing to do with social...
This is kind of new language. This is new age stuff, you know? Not quite chishy, but you know, I think you were there already. I mean, because I do...I think you were probably committed to just building good houses, so...
Yeah, well, like, you know, there's another part of that, and that's warranty.
I don't want to get into that.
Some of that is driven already.
Compliments she made.
I'm trying to be quiet here.
Thank you, Andrew.
So my other concern is, help me, staff, please, to understand how we integrate the Attachment A, the envision Eugene livability thing, neighborhood livability. How do you see that playing out? I mean, how is that going to play out? Because, you know, I think about the conversation that I've heard forever, you know, "We don't want to grow out. People don't want to grow up." So what is the recipe then? You know, how are we going to do this?
Terry, do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
Sure. You look poised to speak.
It's a great question, and one that we've been wrestling with for a couple of years, as you know. I guess my first answer would just be that, as I think the letter lays out pretty eloquently, a lot of community work has been done in...all across the city, in different parts of different neighborhoods, identifying kind of where the opportunities might lie for adding additional people without destroying what people love about where they live. And so that's really the goal of the infill compatibility work that's been done and the opportunity citing work that's been done. And I think there's so much potential that we can carry that forward into the strategies that we implement in envision Eugene. And that's my hope, and I think the intention of the project moving forward. And I don't want to go into details unless you ask for them, but...
No, I don't really have details. I just wanted to bring it up, because I'm personally challenged when I hear this conversation about, you know, holding sacred the character of communities. You know, I just...you know, and when I hear how people say, "How it used to be," you know, I...those are different key...different...people have different connections to that, because when I hear how things used to be, I think about, you know, the sundown laws that were in our city. I think about the fact that a person of color couldn't buy a house before 1962 here. So that...and that doesn't work for me. So when I hear that, that's what I hear. That's not what the people are intending, I'm sure, but I'm just...you know, when I see this kind of stuff, I just kind of...and I guess I get what people are trying to hang on to. You know, I live in an industrial neighborhood. You know, I live in Trainsong. I've chosen to stay there. I believe that good things can happen in any neighborhood that you live in, and we, you know, we're working together in that neighborhood to make it a better place for everybody involved. So I'm just, you know, I just don't have that...I didn't have that template of a wonderful, you know, wonderful place, you know, where there were sidewalks and accessible grocery stores and, you know, wonderful parks close by, so...and it wasn't that I chose to live there. That's where I could afford to go and live when I first came to the community, and I've chosen to stay there, you know, to help, you know, while I can.
So another round then?
Um, no, ma'am, I think I'm done. Am I really 30 minutes?
Yep.
We've all blown the clocks today.
I know, I know. I'm just being very flexible. Alan.
Thank you all. Thank you for your work on this. It is a lot of hours. It's like the mayor said, it's not something you just plunk down for an hour and do, and staff is doing a great job in moving this forward. I think this is a great example of how complicated this whole process is, and how all...and trying to fit all the pieces, parts together, is a daunting task, but I think we're actually doing it probably better than anybody I've seen anywhere. So hats off to us. When I think of access to the network, the thing that comes to mind is a fiber optics network. And when you...and it's very similar to transportation system. You can't have a fiber optic network that is just little fingers out into the neighborhood. The first thing you need to do is build the backbone, and then you have access to it via a system that fingers out into the other users. And same with the transportation system. You have to have a backbone first, and then you have systems that feed to it. And that comes from multimodal access to that backbone. So it's either pedestrian, transit, or walking, or using your car. So all of those things need to be integrated into it, and that multimodal aspect of transportation in regard to this is really important, because it...having access to transportation systems to get to work, or get to shopping, or get to play is really important. So it needs to be convenient, it needs to be frequent, and it needs to be affordable, but you also have to have access to it. I like your definition of community safety, in that it also includes economic security, safe transportation, and safe...safety from discrimination. I thought that was a good way of putting that. When we're talking about neighborhoods, I think neighborhoods are...and protecting the livability...I understand what you're saying, Andrew. By my definition of protecting the livability in neighborhoods is protecting all those things that people like. the livability in neighborhoods is protecting all those things that people like about their neighborhoods, like the parks, or the sidewalks, or the trees, and the density level. But, and if it doesn't exist in other places, then adding it to it. So it's protecting and enhancing the livability of neighborhoods that I think most people are really concerned about. The, on the affordable housing part, it, that's really complicated, as you've known, Bill, because you've been trying to do it for a long time. You need the sufficient land, but you also need a sufficient mix, including multifamily, as well as smaller homes and larger homes. But, and you also need incentives to get there. And some, and those are the things we need to focus on. It's not just about land, it's all about the other things, too, to make sure that we get to a mix of affordable housing. There was one slide that had a couple of, where did it go? It's about four from the back, it's access to housing opportunities, bottom right.
Another round, Alan?
Oh, God, yeah. Join the club, brother.
So much Ted Caffey today.
Got our own jackets.
Pat, are you there? Maybe not. Okay. George, anything you want to add?
I won't go over.
Okay.
Just a few minutes, huh?
Careful.
Thanks for your comments. Thank you for your comments, and thanks for the presentation.
I am here.
Oh, he is there. Well...
I have a few things on.
We could hardly understand you, Pat. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Back to you, George.
Okay. Well, I just want to continue this, the neighborhood livability discussion a little bit, because I think it's really key and really core to the whole thing. And, you know, obviously, it has widespread support, because all the, this is just a fraction of the people who probably could have signed this thing, this memo to the CRG. And I just really want to urge the manager and the team, the management team, to really, I mean, it is one of the pillars, I see. And this is one that we can really do something about, we can really control this. Whereas some of them are kind of, you know, I don't know if the city can really, we can help support a sustainable family wage economy, but we can't create it. You know, the city organization cannot create new economies, but we can, we can help guide them. There are, there are things we can do, but at this one, we really have control over. And it is so key to the whole idea of Envision Eugene, that, I mean, you know, like, say we expand the urban growth boundary, and we do density, but now we don't have liberal neighborhoods. Well, who wants to be in a place where you spend two-thirds of your time, and what, you know, if it deteriorates? So maintaining and enhancing is real important, and I just want to make sure that the CRG, you know, that you do everything you can to make, make the CRG really use, keep that in mind, and, you know, for whatever just, stuff that you bring us at the end of next month, so that's really...
I just wondered if our two members here want to talk about your experience with the CRG's discussions around neighborhood livability, because it's been a pretty, I would want you to share with those that haven't been there, that that hasn't been a small amount of the conver, uh, conversation.
I'd comment, and I, to comment a bit on Council Ortiz's comment about, just don't want to, people don't want to grow out or up, I would say that a big part of this conversation has resulted in everyone sort of realizing, or I guess I can't say everyone, there seems to be a feeling that that's not really the case, that it's, it's more of a if and when we do grow out or up or both. Let's make sure it's based on rational discussion, based on real numbers, and good conversation and good research. I don't get the feeling that there's a strong camp of, no way, no how are we going out? No way, no how are we going up and in? I think that there was a belief going into this, that those two camps very strongly existed. And I think that we've done a lot of work as a group to break that down quite a bit, and that really understand that there's a lot of, there's a lot of support for doing any combination thereof, as long as it is a reasonable movement based on a really well-vetted research and good conversation. So I think that would be my only reaction to what I've heard.
Well, I think, you know, I came to this CRG with a great deal of bias, because I think that it's very difficult economically to do density infill in neighborhoods where they don't want it, or count that as a reasonable offset to the process of, do we or don't we expand? I, you landed right in front of me with, well, what, how did we do this? And I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a great acceptance of density infill by neighborhood groups, because I think they're afraid, George, that you're, you know, that this density infill isn't going to be pretty. And there are pretty good examples right now of some density infill that isn't pretty, that should never have been allowed, that don't do anything for the neighborhoods. And I think when you see that, you think, whoa, you mean, is that what you mean by density infill? That's pretty scary. So I suspect that some of this density infill was a sort of an offset to the expansion of UGB, but it also might have gotten a little out of control, because I don't think that anybody anticipated some really ugly stuff to come out of it. And so there's a reaction by the community that, don't mess, I mean, the community at the CRG, don't mess with our neighborhood. And some of you are aware of what's going on in the University District, and they're, they're not too happy with, you know, what's happening there. People, I thought, who were going to be very opposed to the UGB expansion, were in fact very open to the discussion about it. Because I think the, what comes to the, you know, your fore, when you talk about expansion of the UGB, is sprawl, urban sprawl, Los Angeles. I grew up in San Francisco, so it's Daly City, you know, the little tiki-taki houses on the hill. And, you know, that's pretty ugly. And I think that that's what people are very concerned about here. I don't, I don't see a lot of, there isn't a lot of, I don't think there's a lot of resistance at the CRG to other people's thoughts. I'm really pleased with that, because I've, I'm also an old soldier, and I've been in resistance conditions. And this stuff is really, I think, the groundwork for, this isn't going to end, I don't think, in February, because there is so much on this table for the CRG. I mean, we are really, I'm going to leave this meeting and go spend four hours or five hours with the housing mix group, and then tomorrow, we're going back to another eight-hour day. So I actually have a job, but I'm...
Not at all, you don't.
You wouldn't know it. So I think there's a tremendous amount of effort being put forth by everybody, to level the playing field and to be honest about that. And that's, that's the part that I see is most enlightening about this.
Only thing I would add to that is, I don't, at least, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see a, a sense of, oh, yeah, we're going to expand, or, oh, yeah, we're not. What I see is a discussion about what's the best way we can do to accommodate the kind of growth that might, we might expect, and how can we do that in a way that best preserves our neighborhoods and captures the kind of way we want to live in our community? And so that's the, that's the nuanced and thoughtful and not easy discussion, that, but people are very willing to participate in it. Yes, Betty?
I was two minutes late, but I'm here.
Good.
I want to apologize for being late, but I had a good reason. Anyway, I just want to say two things, that I think design standards are just crucially important. I watch a house, I've watched lots of things going up that are not appropriate at all to the neighborhood. There is a house right now that I know about, but that, it's going to be a beautiful house, but it's that far from the next house. And their windows look into the windows of the next house, which had been there for a long time, which means that now a huge fence is going up, which is probably illegal, even it's so tall. But we, some standards could prevent things like that, which make, and when people build houses in backyards, and I know one very close to me, that are out of, out of, are not incompatible with the rest of the neighborhood. If you have a whole neighborhood of one-story houses, and you let someone build on a hill in a backyard, two stories high, overlooking everybody, it's just not, that is not a good kind of infill. On the other hand, there are things like Cascade Manor, which is filling up, and they, there are lots of people living in a small space there. And I think there are places where things like that can, can happen, and some people choose, just a minute, Pat, some people choose to live in places like that, and love it, actually, even though they don't have dogs, I don't think. But at the basis...
And how could they love it?
That's my feeling, yes. At the basis of everything, when you talk about things being accessible, it's living wages. And I wish, I hope that council will at least pass a living wage ordinance sometime. Obviously, we can't dictate what wages other people pay, but we can decide what the city pays and, and the people we contract with, so that it can make an example for the community. And another thing we can do is, if, there will always be some employers who aren't paying a living wage, and some people who have to work for a smaller amount, at sometimes in their lives at least, Pat, be quiet. But at least we could not, if we give subsidies for anyone who comes here, that should depend on their paying a living wage. I'm not saying to get rid of all the companies that don't pay a living wage, but we should not help or subsidize in any way, some group that does not pay a living wage. I hope that we will take some small steps toward that, because money is what makes things accessible to you, most things. And I even used up the time, and I didn't, I don't talk that much.
Pat, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I wasn't sure that we're going to be talking about living wages, but...
Oh, I'm here.
To back up a lot, two blocks, regarding...
Pat, Pat, we can't under, I don't know what the deal is, but we really can't understand a word you're saying.
Okay, I'm in the backseat of a car, so I apologize, I'll just listen.
What'd he say?
He's in the backseat of a car, and he apologizes, he will just listen.
Oh, okay. Because I couldn't even understand that.
My interpretation services are available at any time of distress.
Ask him what he's doing back there.
Mike, you're making this meeting accessible for all of us.
I'm just trying to do my part, John.
Well, we'll labor through, if you've got something that you really need, then we'll let, we'll get Mike to interpret, and we'll all be able to hear.
Okay, what'd he say, Mike?
He said that he's approaching an opportunity to speak to us in a different way here soon, so he'll get back to us in a minute.
Okay.
Really? I'm approaching the summit.
Mike must have been an air traffic reporter. What'd I do, Pat? Was I close? Oh, he dropped off.
That's what I heard.
All right, in the meantime, I've got second round, Mike, and then Andrea, and then Alan.
Go ahead and pass now, I've had all the fun I want to have right now.
Okay, okay. Alan?
I'm just in awe.
First I speak Japanese, and now this, right?
Yeah, and then kowabunga. You know, this whole thing, one of the things I think about this process that'll be, when we look back on it, one of the benefits that we'll, we'll see is, is the education about all the different multiple factors that go, that are involved in doing this kind of planning stuff. And I think most people without that education are a bit schizo about this, in that I actually had a constituent come up to me and say, "I don't want you to blow out the UGB," and in the same breath said, "And I want to complain about this infill project that was on a flag lot," in the same sentence. And I was, in my head, I, you know, stopped listening to what she was saying, because I was going, how can you say those three things in the same sentence? And I think as we move through this process and project, we'll get more educated about that. And it's not just an either-or kind of thing, it's more shades of gray. But planning does have a huge impact on it. I represent the West University neighborhood, and the planning that we did or didn't do in, in regard to the West University neighborhood, is now we have this monoculture of multifamily housing, 99% renter occupied, very little open space, and we have a whole multitude of problems in that neighborhood because of that. And so we need to be real cognizant of that. There's all sorts of environmental, economic, and social equity issues that revolve around how we allowed West University neighborhood to develop. And now we're reeling from them, in terms of some of the riots that we've seen there and different things. And I agree with you, Betty, I think part of this whole social equity thing is about a living wage, and I hope we do something about that as well. We can only set an example. But finally, the, when we talk about protecting the neighborhoods and building projects that are not ugly, I think part of it is about neighborhood input and folks wanting to be heard. One of the things we did in the MYCAP, Minor Code of Amendments, is that for PUDs four or greater, you have to actually go to the, to the, to the neighborhood as a builder, and talk to them about the project. They don't have veto power, but you have that conversation about, you know, what their concerns are. So, and the hope there was that it would ameliorate some of those bad developments that are ugly, or don't fit, that are incompatible with what's going on. And actually, I've seen that happen several times already in my ward, where when people started talking, when the builders talked to the neighbors, they expressed what their concerns were, and they changed the project in just little slight nuanced ways that made it much more acceptable and much more compatible. And we didn't get ugly projects.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. So, John, the seven pillars of Envision Eugene, are those essentially guiding principles and values for Envision Eugene as a whole, or is this the, the social equity piece or analysis portion of Envision Eugene that looks through this lens?
As a whole. So for example, as you look through some of these, things like protecting and restoring natural resources tends to be more on the environmental side, although there's a...
And the reason I bring that up is because I, I don't know that I would agree with these as the seven, you know, most overriding values of this process. I was wondering where these were developed.
They really kind of come out of, if you, if you take a look at the vision that the council has talked about, you take a look at the best outcomes that the CRG and others have provided, take a look at the Envision Eugene principles, what these are trying to do is to not synthesize, but as another way to express those, and probably an easier user-friendly way than having to wade through 20 pages of best outcomes, which are very good, and I would recommend people do that, but I think the general public won't do that. And so what the, what these are intended to do is to give a snapshot of, is this is what we're trying to accomplish when we talk about Envision Eugene. And it's not, it's not all-encompassing for everything that goes on in this community, and that's not intended to be.
For example, when it says promote compact urban development, I think that kind of gets to an, to one of the ends of these two, kind of, the diametrically, you know, opposed parts of the conversation that we're trying to reconcile. This seems to say that we're preconceived to one of those ends rather than the other.
I don't think so, because I think what we have to recognize is, we talked in the community resource group about phantom capacity, for example, that you can't plan for something that you have no chance of achieving. And so we can't, for example, say, "We're going to put all new growth in this community in a two-block area of downtown."
Yeah.
Theoretically, you could probably do that by building really, really high buildings. The reality of doing that is probably zero. So we shouldn't plan for that. But what it does say is, generally, that's what we want to try to accomplish. It doesn't preclude other choices that ensure that other pillars are met, other goals are met, and that we don't create phantom capacity that's not really there. Does that help? I'm trying to...
Well, I, when we get to the part towards the end of February, where we're, as a council, looking through the kind of tactical options for achieving our strategies, it seems to me that this may play a part here of our consideration. This may be the lens through which we see some of those choices. And I just, I just, just looking at this, there is a great deal here that I can agree with. There's a lot of it that I heard by participating in the CRG. And there's also, obviously, some competing sorts of goals here, that that's kind of where the decision-making takes place. But if we're going to use this as a kind of a ma- But if we're going to use this as a kind of a major theme or filter, I was hoping that the council could have some discussion around this as well.
You will have some. We're introducing it today, because we're going to be talking about it with the CRG tomorrow. As we continue to move forward with the council, there'll be opportunities to talk about this as well as supporting strategies around some of these.
Okay.
So this is not the last time you're going to see it, by any means.
Well, I wouldn't think so. I was hoping we can move forward with something that the table probably agrees to as a whole, as our guiding principles, I would think.
I know we'll have more conversation, and we'll move forward, but I would say that one of the things that I would think when I look at this is, if you chose to look at it, and in certain way you would say, if you promote compact urban development, does that mean that you're against any kind of expansion? And I don't think that is the conversation that I've heard around the table. What I've heard is, the goal is to be as compact as you can, as long as you can, but to plan for the future, and to give yourselves options and flexibility out into the future. So it may not be, it could be perceived to be taking one end of the stick, but it's really not. It's really a, as I think they both said, is a flexibility, is a trying to create the opportunity for different solutions out in the future. But they still have more conversation to have about that before it gets to us to have a more conversation about it.
And what I do want to, the very last one, and Julie, this is a part of what I think you so well brought up, about the adaptable and flexible implementation. And I know Alan's talked about the Jaws' uncertainty for several iterations. But I think that the concept is really good, that says, we're not going to be able to know everything, but we do want to keep moving down the road, and we want to have a very good way of checking in, revisiting, and making changes as we go. And so I think that's an important part of what we want to do as we continue to move down the road. So that's why that one's in there. So it does talk about that flexibility, adaptability.
It did occur to me, as I was listening to you all today, and because we just heard the governor's sort of beginning speeches, and some of the work that he's talking about doing on economic development, and that some of that intention of the direction they're going to be trying to go in the state, and how we capture a piece of that action seems maybe like a part of the conversation that we need to somehow embed in this. We are already doing some of this stuff, it's just sort of trying to take advantage of what opportunities are there. I know there, you know, the energy, assessing energy, and trying to fix things up that way, and the jobs that have to do with that. But there's a whole range of things that maybe, I don't know how far they can fit into the Envision Eugene, but certainly it wouldn't hurt to be thinking as we think about where we're going, where the state is going, and how we can be in a more offensive position, I would say. Not offensive, but offensive.
I think one more comment, Mayor.
Non-defensive.
Our intent will be, is whatever strategies and tactics that eventually the council chooses to move forward, our intent is to actually accomplish those, and that they don't go on a shelf somewhere. So as part of the discussion as we go down this road, it will be a discussion around, how do we ensure we're able to do that? Some of it's a resource issue, but we're going to want to make sure that what we, whether we say we're going to do, we commit ourselves to doing that. And so that's just another piece of the discussion that council will have as we continue to have these conversations.
So, anything else for the good of the order from anybody? Just want to thank you again very much for being with us today, and thank you for the presentation. Did you guys have anything that you wanted to ask, or anything? Okay, all right.
Well, I just, I do have one concern, and that is that this is a process really complex. I mean, much more complex than just, gee, are we going to move the boundaries? And listening to the comments, you know, I don't think we want to lose focus, but I also do work in Seattle, I'm another, I have another job. And one of the things that's going on in Seattle is something that we can do here very nicely. The problem is that it's going to take some code changes, and it's going to take some understanding of finance, because when you mix residential with commercial, you have a little funding issue. How do you fund this? Do you fund it as residential, or you fund it as commercial? And then how do you write the code? Fire code for commercial and residential are not compatible. So in this mix, there's a lot of dollars that, you know, we haven't even looked at yet, that are going to have a lot to do with the affordability of some of this stuff. And we automatically think, golly, if we can just make, you know, we can squeeze more people into this building, it's going to be lower. It probably isn't that simple, because the cost of taking an old commercial building, for instance, and converting it to an apartment complex, which they did in Seattle, on a number, in a number of locations worked, and in other places, they just flat bulldozed the property because it was too tough to work around. And I think that what, the flexibility aspect of this is really critical. I think that we're, everybody really wants to do the right thing. I don't think there's anybody in there trying to trip anybody up. I think we're all hearing everybody's story and trying to proceed down the same sort of generally agreed-upon path, whether we're, people squirt out every once in a while. But there's some, there's some really hard questions to be asked, and even more difficult answers that are going to drive some of this, that we haven't really brought, it hasn't come up yet. So, you know, and I'm just going to throw in the old story of, you know, it's a supply and demand issue. This, we don't have a lot of land, existing land costs are going to go up. And I know this, because I came from an area where they restricted growth, and the cost of land doubled and tripled in a very short period of time. So that hasn't helped the cost of living either, and affordability issues. You know, the West University, great, you've got high density, you've got 90 people in a block, unanticipated, but that's a lot of freewheelers in a block, 90, 20-year-olds. So...
All with cars.
All with cars, yeah. And so, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that this is a project, a process I never anticipated being so complex. And I'm honored that I'm in there, but I'm sure not adding much to the mix, other than what my own expertise is in the construction side of things. So I think, I got to tell, I think what you did here was an outstanding event. I think you did the right thing, because the doors are open now, and everybody's put their cards on the table, so there's, nobody's pulling any punches, we're not doing the same old dance we did in Haiti, you know, where we've got people in the background pulling strings and things. Still a couple of those people want that, but as John said, that's a lot of white noise. So, you know, I suspect that what's happening here is going to result in much, much, much greater impact than just moving the urban growth boundary or not. I think it's a great process. We can do the right thing.
The sum is greater than its parts.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it very, very much. And with that, I think we've reached the end of our meeting for today. Thank you.
So, last night, we were talking about the CRG.